Do wanna uh. Hope y'all don't mind, but I just wanna be able to go back and see, you know, so we can improve going forward. Y'all are there with the word? I'm reading from the New King James Version, so I'll start. Now, there was a certain man of Ramadan Zofim of the mountains of Ephraim, and his name was Alkona. So they list all the generations, but I'm just gonna go ahead to number two. And he had two wives. The name of one was Hannah, and the name of the other was Panina. Panina had children, but Hannah had no children. This man went up from the city yearly to worship and sacrifice the Lord of Holson Shiloh. Also, the two sons of Eli, Hafni, Phineas, the priests of the Lord were there. And whenever the time came for Elkanah to make an offering, he would give portions to Panina, his wife, and to all her sons and daughters. But to Hannah, he would give a double portion, for he loved Hannah, although the Lord had closed her womb. And her rival also provoked her severely to make her miserable, because the Lord had closed her womb. So it was year by year when she went up to the house of the Lord that she provoked her. Therefore, she wept and did not eat. Then Alkona, her husband, said to her, Hannah, why do you weep? Why do you not eat? And why is your heart grieved? Am I not better to you than ten sons? So Hannah arose after they had finished eating and drinking in Shiloh. Now Eli, the priest, was sitting on the seat by the doorpost of the tabernacle of the Lord. And she was in bitterness of soul and prayed to the Lord and wept in anguish. Then she made a vow and said, oh, Lord of hosts, if you would indeed look on the affliction of your maid servant and remember me, and not forget your maid servant, but will give your maid servant a male child, then I will give him to the Lord all the days of his life, and no razor should come upon his head. And it came as she continued praying before the Lord that Eli washed her mouth. Now Hannah spoke in her heart, only her lips moved, but her voice was not heard. Therefore Eli thought she was drunk. So Eli said to her, how long will you be drunk? Put your wine away from you. But Hannah answered, said, no, my Lord, I am a woman of a sorrowful spirit. I have drunk neither wine nor intoxicated drink, but have poured out my soul before the Lord. Do not consider your maid servant a wicked woman, for out of the abundance of my complaint and grief, I have spoken until now. Then Eli answered and said, go in peace, and the God of Israel grant your petition which you have asked of him. And she said, let your maid servant find favor in your sight. So the woman went her way and ate, and her face was no longer sad. Then they arose early in the morning and worshiped before the Lord and returned and came to the house of Rama. And Alkona knew his wife. He had sex with her. And the Lord remembered her. So it came to pass, in the process of time, that Hannah conceived and bore a son, and called his name Samuel, saying, because I have asked for him from the Lord. So I'm gonna stop there. That was a lot of reading, but it wasn't too, too long. Okay, so just since it was a lot of reading, I'm just gonna give like a quick summary before I go on. So in the story of Hannah Panina, we see both a personal and a purposeful struggle between the two women. Panina, who had children, would provoke and taunt Hannah, who was barren. But Hannah's personal struggle had a purpose, as it led Hannah to fervently pray to the Lord for a child. And in the end, her prayer was answered, and she gave birth to Samuel, who became a great prophet and judge in Israel. But before Hannah received the promise, she had to endure the struggle. And I'm sure many, if not all of us, can relate to Hannah and her emotional turmoil during her personal struggle. Like, have you ever felt like you were being pushed to the edge? Like OMG, if one more thing happens, if one more thing goes wrong, if another person mistreats me, if something else falls through, one more setback is just gonna send me straight over the ledge. Like, have any of y'all been there? And I have been there. Sometimes I still have moments that I find myself there now today. Also, if we think back and look over our lives during the many times that we felt that way, I bet we all have the testimony that that very push, that seemed to push you over the edge, was the push that was actually needed to push you into your purpose. And so that's where my focus is going on tonight. So just like with Hannah Panina, in the beginning of verse two, so I'm gonna be going back with us and then into the Bible verses two. Like, I don't want it to be too wordy. I do want it to be like us, like going through the Bible, breaking down certain verses or just remembering them. So just like with Hannah Panina in the beginning, uh, verse two it states, Alkona had two wives, and in situations of such strife and conflict is sure to be present. And we can see there, as one of the conflicts, uh, as there was a tense competitive relationship between the wives. Panina had children and Hannah had no children. And Hannah had no children at that time, because the Lord chose to close up Hannah's womb. So in Bible terms, Hannah was barren. And I'm sure all you guys know what the meaning, the word barren means, but I'm still gonna say it. But barren means not producing or incapable of producing offspring, like in Hannah's case. And just like Hannah, we all at some point find ourselves navigating through personal deserts in barren seasons. In other words, we can all find ourselves to be, to have been or may now even still be barren in some areas of our lives. Hannah was barren in fertility. And some of us, and, and guys, you know, we're just, oh, this is an intimate session. If y'all wanna stop me, if y'all wanna ask questions, if y'all wanna say something, please feel free. Like, you know, we all here helping each other grow in God. So I'm sorry. So Hannah was barren in fertility, and some of us may have been barren in that same exact way as Hannah. And then there's others of us who may not be barren when it comes to having kids, but two can experience barrenness in various aspects of our lives, such as relationships and community, like struggling to form meaningful connections, feeling emotionally disconnected. And some other relationships that we are in now, or that we have probably gotten ourselves out of, feeling isolated or disconnected, lacking a sense of belonging to communities, community support. Also, we can feel barren in our spiritual or personal growth feelings. Oh, go ahead, Nadine. You wanna say something?
Um, I'm sorry. I didn't mean to interrupt you.
No, no, it's okay.
You know, um, I, I will, you know, I'm gonna, uh, tell you about when we were in the pandemic, and we had to be, um, locked up, you know, like in, in, indoors and everything. Now, for me, that was like death notice, because I'm an outgoing person. I needed to be with people, and I was all by myself. I felt like I was on the edge, you know? I, 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 I was a diff, I was, good thing I had a few people, my friends, helped me through, because I was climbing the walls. It was just not a good situation, you know, that we were all in. But, I mean, God got me through it, and he, and I endured it, you know? But it, it was really difficult, you know, and, uh, I'm, you know, I'm thankful that the Lord got me through, but still it was, I, I, you know, to, uh, some of my friends, like this one guy that I know that is a wonderful person, and he's my friend, and I yelled at him. I was like, so, it was really on the edge, you know, of, uh, it was so hard, I have to say. But, you know, um, you know, I'm living proof. I'm here.
I know, that's right. We all are actually living proof, because the pandemic, the pandemic, that situation wasn't personal to one person. That was felt by the whole world. And also in that moment, like, I started the Bible study. I did my first one in March. I was supposed to have one in April. My birthday is in April, but also in April, two days after my birthday, my mom had died. And so this year, four years, and my dad ended up dying four months later in August in twenty twenty. So I lost both of my parents. Um, but in April, I would normally, like, my mother, seven years prior to her death, she moved to Georgia, uh, closer to one of my sisters. And that every April, I would, on spring break, my daughter's spring break, cuz that's when it would be, and that's always was by my birthday, I would go visit her. So every time I plan stuff, so ever since she died, I would plan things, and I just go numb. Like, I just don't do anything. And I was planning on having this, had different dates. Like, I was even talking to Danielle, like, I'm gonna do it again in April. I believe I even told you too, Nadine, like, I'm gonna do it April.
Yes, you did.
Like, I just go blank, but I am getting better. And I just asked myself, like, even with traveling, I wasn't doing it, but I did travel to Texas in April. So, you know, um, but yeah, so a lot of, it affected a lot of us, but as long as we keep seeking God and we get through. We can, so, and, um, she, she had texted me, was like, are you still doing the Bible study? And that just blessed my heart. I'm like, Lord, forgive me. And I gotta get up and go and let you put something out there. So thank you so much for, um, doing that. I really appreciate it. But yeah, so we feel barren in that sense, relational, uh, relationships, spiritual and personal growth, feeling spiritually dead, stagnant, feeling distant from a sense of purpose or our relationship with God, as oftentimes barren situations will have us to feel this way, like God must not be with me if I'm going through all this. But we have to stand on His word and remember that He will never leave us nor forsake us. You know, in some other areas, um, careers, feeling stuck or unfulfilled in one's professional life, financial abundance experienced and a lack of resources, and struggling to achieve financial stability and success. Lastly, uh, emotional well-being and mental health. You know, we can feel empty and numb, lacking joy or fulfillment in our daily life. And also in physical health, struggling with chronic illnesses, disability, you know, limitations, lost in grief. Like, just feeling like you don't have someone that you depended on. Like, for instance, with you, Nadine, you was feeling like, oh, where are my relationships? And Hi-Tide, thanks for joining us. Um, you were feeling like, where are my relationships? Um, you know, and so on and so forth.
Especially that, especially that I had be in the house, and we couldn't get out. I mean, that's what I'm saying. Yeah, yeah. That's what I mean.
I get you.
Yes.
But, uh, exactly. But, um, these are things, are areas that we may be lacking. And in turn, we hurt over it and long for God to birth these things in our lives, to birth the very things that we lack, but so desperately desire. And also on the flip side, there are times where we can lack in one area and have favor in another. Like with Hannah, Hannah lacked a child, but she had Elkanah's heart, hus- her husband's heart. And Panina, who was able to have children, did not have his heart. She, she had his children, but she didn't have her, his heart in the way that Hannah did. So even though she may have seemed to have more, because when you read in the story, it's like, uh, Panina, you had more than Hannah. Why are you provoking her? Like, you know, what is the problem? You know, so as odd as situations may seem, is that it, uh, it is some areas in our life, sometimes in our life, where we can have less than someone. And it can cause a person who has more than us to be jealous of us and do something that, uh, you know, and become a Panina. And they start to do mean things, or act in certain ways as such, and we begin to view them as an enemy to us. Like, in a Bible verse six, in verse six, it mentions Panina as being Hannah's rival. And a rival is a person or thing competing with another for the same objective. And you, so they were in a competitive relationship where conflict exist, existed. So what was the, what was the conflict, the first one? Panina had children, Hannah had none. So the Lord, cuz the Lord closed up her womb, and it caused her to be deeply in anguish over that. And you can be like, oh, you know, sometimes, like, the way we are now in this world, not having children might not be as deep, like with us nowadays, but in the Bible days, it was very important to have children, especially in the Old Testament, where lineage and descendants were highly valued. So when a woman in the Bible experienced the pain of barrenness, it was not just a physical challenge, but it was also an emotional one, as it was often associated with a sense of incompleteness or inadequacy, in which Hannah felt. But now, if we go back to verse three, it details where the conflict would happen, which was at the place of worship. Yeah, they had issues in the church. And it's so funny, as many times as I read this story, I did not realize, it didn't dawn on me that the place of their conflict was happening at the church. And when I first thought to do Hannah and Panina, I was in a conflict at the church with someone, and it was over a seat. Someone who has seniority, we, I'm in a position that she's in, and she ain't really feeling that too much. So, and it was over a seat, and I'm like, Lord, this is some nonsense. I'm like, you see this, and I was being very nice, but God, He gave me favor so fast. Um, but before I even, um, before He even gave me favor, I just wrote down Hannah Panina, cuz I said, I feel like I'm in this situation. I said, I'm gonna go back and read that story. And I wrote it in my notes. And like, soon as I, after I wrote that, a lady, she turned around, who was in front of me, she was like, um, were you trying to sit up closer? Uh, was that the issue that I'm, I'm hearing? So I didn't even know that she even heard or anything like that. So I explained to her that I needed to sit up closer, and I told her the reason why. And so she moved me up right in front of them, and I'm gonna be honest, I wanted to be petty like, no. I'm like, and I'm an elder prophet, is a whole leader in the church, but yes, we have moments where we have to remember, we can't be like that. You know, and they were like, a Panina to me, it was her and her friend, and they, I felt like that was just like, double tagging me. Like, I had moved in a certain spot so they could sit next to each other, but they kinda, but I needed to be a little closer, but they kinda like, you know, backed me out of the seat. And I ended up being, having to be further, and I'm like, okay, I need to be here. Well, you can just run or go over as if push and shove, and I'm like, okay, all right, fine. You know, like, Lord, this is nonsense, but God ended up pushing me, uh, back up, um, pushing me up further. And I was just, instead of me turning, being petty, and, um, being like them to me, I just like really went up to worship God. Like, thank you, God, for your favor. That's favor to me. Cuz the lady had no idea. I didn't even know her from a canopy, and she's like, you know, she just rectified the situation. You know, so issues starting in the church had happened long before us, y'all. So, um, so with Hannah, from her, she had issues in the church. So from her going to, from her home, living with the issue, then to go to the place of worship, where you wanna be relieved and healed from the turmoil, that's where Hannah experienced it the most. But guess what? Hannah didn't give up. She still returned year after year. That's what the Bible said. They went year after year to sacrifice at the place of the Lord. So she was year after year going through her issues at home, going through her issues at church. She still came, serving God, worshiping Him, and honoring Him in the midst of her trials. And we too need to do that in the midst of ours. And then if we go to verse five, it tells of the other conflict between the wives. It says, but to Hannah, her husband, uh, he, which is Elkanah, the husband, would give a double portion, for he loved Hannah, although the Lord had closed her womb. And Panina witnessed that. It was jealous, cuz even though she had been, and it wasn't enough for him to love her more than Hannah. And she bears so much child. I have a child, and trust me, I have dealt with the other woman. I'm the first baby mother out of three. So going through all that, I was all right about time the third one came, but the second one, please. You know, so, and they lived in the house. This wasn't even a living situation, so I'm sure we all can just understand how we feel. We have those soul ties when you have a child. So Hannah ain't even have a kid, so it's a little different. So I kinda do understand Panina's, Panina's feeling, but we, we talking about Hannah right now. So, you know, but she was wrong, so. So she witnessed that he loves her more than that. So verse six, she is named as her rival, her enemy, because she provoked Hannah severely to make her miserable, because the Lord had closed up her womb. In verse seven, it said, again, that it was year after year that she went up to the house of the Lord, that she provoked Hannah and reminded her of her lack. She reminded her of her limitations and of, and of her barrenness, and therefore Hannah had wept and did not eat. But also, just like Hannah, how many know that sometimes God will allow a Panina in your life to provoke you, to get you to a deeper place in God, and in your worship, to get you to push past and to press into another version of you that you didn't even know you had in you, just to get to your purpose. And before we get there to our purpose, we are first met with the struggle and the turmoil that we feel inside, which normally first gets us to draw closer to God, and that's what He wants us to do. But the enemy doesn't want that. So he would get in people. It's not the person that's coming against us. When, when people come against us, it's not them. The Bible says we wrestle not against flesh and blood. So it's the enemy that gets in them, that calls them to be a Panina in our lives, and causes, uh, cuz it's our purpose that the enemy is after. So he would try to do and send everything and every distraction to get us to forfeit it, if we can give up in a process, if we can, you know, just think God is not for us, the enemy has won, and that's not what we wanna do. We wanna make sure that God is the Lord of our lives, and that we remember God, and, um, that we trust God, and that we stand on His word. So the enemy, he wants, you know, he have people to do that, and he wants our minds to stay on that thing. He wants our minds to stay on the hurt. He wants us to magnify the hurt, and magnify the person causing the hurt to constantly think on that. And in turn, we make the situation bigger than what it really is. But the Lord set for us to set our minds on things above, not on things on the earth, not on our hurts, not on the things that people do to us or say to us, but to give it over to the Lord, cuz He will fight our battles and vindicate on our behalf way better than we can. So back to the Bible, that was the two conflicts, and that's how Panina provoked Hannah sorely. But after being provoked sorely, you know, Hannah is, is our example of what to do when we are feeling attacked, when we are going through. So after being provoked sorely, the Bible states that, and then Hannah wept, she cried and did not eat. So to me, that's, she fasted. She fasted. And her hurt and anguish was so noticeable, that in verses eight to ten, it mentions, her husband said to her, Hannah, why do you weep? Why do you not eat? And why is your heart grieved? Am I not better to you than ten sons? Apparently not. But from Elkanah's response to Hannah's sorrow, we see that he did love her. Yet many Bible sources say that, like many men, he was insensitive. He did not recognize that she had needs that he cannot fill, fulfill, such as the desire to be a mother. The only, the only one that can fulfill this boy that she had was God. And we too need to know that, and remember that for ourselves, that no man, no person, no place, no thing can fill any voice that we may have linger on, lingering on in, inside of us. Only God can fulfill that, if we turn to Him like Hannah did. And in verse nine, it said that she was in bitterness of soul and prayed to the Lord and wept in anguish. Then she made a vow and said, oh, Lord of hosts, if you were indeed, look on the affliction of your maid servant and remember me, and not forget your maid servant, but will give your maid servant a male child, then I will give him to the Lord all the days of his life. So we see here that Hannah prayed to the Lord while she was in bitterness of soul and in great anguish. Yet she did the right thing. So she did the right thing. Hannah took those bitter and anguish feelings to God honestly in prayer. So she was honest before the Lord, and that's how we have to be. The Bible says we don't have to make up fancy prayers just to be honest and come to God. You know, uh, we just need to be honest and come to God, being as humble as you know how to be. And I'm gonna be honest, some of my fastest answer prayers is when I came to God humbly, just being who I am. Like, Lord, this is going on. This is how I feel. Forgive me if I'm wrong for feeling this way, uh, about this person, or, you know, feeling this way, period. But you're the only one that I can come to and talk to. I'm not going to a friend. I'm not posting it on social media, what's going on. I'm not backbiting. I'm not, you know, just doing devilish stuff, like, but I'm coming to you, cuz you're the only one who can help this situation. And, you know, I tell them how I, I tell them the situation. I tell them how I feel, and I just ask them to take control, take control, to control of my emotions too. And I promise you, God be coming through so fast on those prayers, like, and I'm just like, oh, thank you, Jesus, cuz I don't wanna be penalized. I don't wanna be hurt, cuz sometimes people hurt me that's in positions, that's in higher roles. And a lot of them like, oh, you can't come against them. You can't ask them, you know, cuz this person is bad, and it's like, uh, I'm gonna come to God. Like, I'm gonna go to God. I know someone who can handle the situation, that's God. And so Hannah, she, she had went into one of her deep prayers, and she prayed fervently, fervently, instead of magnifying the hurt, or magnifying the issue. But with Hannah's prayer, I also want you guys to take note on verse eleven. It says, Hannah began her prayer by calling on the Lord of hosts. This title is a, a saying is viewed as meaning the Lord of mighty armies. So y'all all know that God has many names with, uh, and each with a different meaning. And I remember hearing a sermon, and a preacher mentioned that sometimes when in dire need, in prayer, we need to call God by the name in which we need Him by. For example, if we need healing in our bodies in prayer, you can say, I'm calling on Jehovah Rapha, the God who heals. If you need God to supply a need, you can call Him Jehovah Jireh, the Lord who provides and et cetera. You know, um, it's a whole bunch of names of God. If you don't know it, that's one of the things that we can do together too. Look up the names of God and learn them, so we can know, uh, you know, just express, draw emphasis on a God that we need Him to be. But here Hannah said, the Lord of hosts, as she felt attacked by her rival. So she called on the Lord of mighty armies to be her protector, cuz Hannah felt so attacked, and wanted justice, wanted relief, wanted her desire to be granted. So even, so even took her prayer up a step further. And it also stated that she made a vow. So that was the step further that she took too. She made a vow to God, promising to give her son, if God would give her a son, that she would give him back to the Lord. She said, I would give him back to the Lord all the days of his life. So it's like, Lord, if you do this for me, I'll, and give me my acts, I would give it back to you. So Hannah took something that already belonged to the Lord, cuz everything belongs to the Lord, uh, and gave it to Him in a greater way for his whole life and dedication to Him. And I'll be closing soon, y'all, so just bear with me. So in this, we can see that there was a deeper level of dedication that the Lord wanted to draw out of Hannah. And he did, and guess what? The Lord granted her acts, and he gave her a son. He gave her the promise. And after she prayed in verses nineteen to twenty, it states that, then they arose early in the morning and worshiped before the Lord and returned and came to the house of Rama. And Alkona knew his wife. Again, she, he had sex with her. And the Lord remembers her. So it came to pass, in the process of time, that Hannah conceived and bore a son and called his name Samuel, saying, because I have asked for him from the Lord. And so we can see here that her promise had came after her breakdown. So it took that to happen before she was able to get her breakthrough. And I'm reading, uh, Sarah Jake's new book, Travel Moves, and it was so funny, even I have this in here. I happen to come across a quote, quote, so I have wrote it down at Fitz. She said, there is no breakthrough without a breakdown. So even with us, when we're at a point of breakdown, instead of feeling like all hope is lost, just remind yourself that you must be at the point of breakthrough, that is nearing, and just believe God for that. So in closing, we can also take that phrase as a reminder in meaning that sometimes in order to experience growth or transformation or a breakthrough in our lives, we must first endure a period of difficulty, challenge, or breakdown. This breakdown can be a time of intense struggle, pain, or suffering, but it also can be a time of learning, self-discovery, and ultimately spiritual growth. And if you notice, if you think about the times when you're going through a struggle, and, um, when you really like drawing a guy, even though he seems like he's not listening, he seems like he's not near, and you just keep drawing, you find yourself growing in God. The more you endure, the more you do grow. You grow spiritually, spiritually, you grow stronger naturally too. You start learning, and you find things out about yourself, and then when God, He delivers you out of that thing, you go back and you view the lesson, like, what did I have to get out of this? You know, but, um, Hannah, despite facing personal anguish and feeling targeted by Panina's actions, she turned to prayer and sought solace in God. So through her faith and perseverance, Hannah's personal struggle was transformed into a purposeful journey. God heard her prayers and eventually blessed her with the son, Samuel, who played a significant role in histories, in Israel's history as prophet and judge, and he gave her more kids too. So Hannah's story illustrates how challenges and personal hardships can serve a greater purpose in God's plan. It teaches us that even in moments of personal pain and adversity, there is a divine purpose at work. By trusting in God's timing and purpose, we can find strength, hope, fulfillment, and fulfillment in the midst of personal trials, and birth out the purpose in the midst of our personal hurts, if we endure to the end. And also, I want you guys to remember that when feeling like we are attacked, to trust God, and to know that He will bring you through, and though the attacks may feel like it, it's not personal. It's purposeful. God will bring you out of it. And that's why I gave the title, it's not personal, it's person, it's purposeful. Because a lot of times, these personal issues that we go through, if we go through them, God will turn it into purpose. So that's pretty much the end of my message right there. Um, hopefully you guys, you know, blessed by that and receive. If y'all have any questions, if there's anything y'all really wanna have, feel free. If I can answer it, I will. If not, I can try to find out and get back to you. But yeah, so that's pretty much, uh, where I was going with it, uh, just for us to hang, hang tight, and just know that God is with us, and He is for us. He will never leave us or forsake us, and that we do have to endure, and sometimes it takes us to increase our prayer life too, to, if we got to fall out, we cry like a baby. Sometimes those are the prayers that God will answer quickly for us. Does anyone have anything to say? Try, you look like you're really.
No, because if I told you the series of events that happened, this is, I don't know if it's a coincidence, cuz, okay, I don't know if I should even go in deep, cuz I don't, I don't wanna take up anybody's time. I just wanna say that this was encouraging.
Oh, thank you.
You to use you.
Thank you.
Very encouraging. So encouraging.
Thank you so much. Thank you. I truly appreciate that. Um, this is not easy to do. This is me actually stepping out of my comfort zone, something that God has placed in my heart a long time, and I'm like, okay, I gotta, I gotta go forth. Like, I wanna be used by God. I wanna go into my next level. Cuz, you know, when you feel stagnant, it's something that, is this God showing you that there's something more for you? When you're feeling like, guys, I'm not doing anything, like, what's next? What's next? God is starting to put that in our spirit, because He has more for us. He has a next for us, and it's up to us to start to walk into it. And sometimes we don't want, you know, depending on our next from God, sometimes we be scared to go into it. We don't want, like, first ministry. It's not easy. Going to ministry, speaking His word. What? The first time that I did this, I was so nervous. Oh, my God, it didn't make no sense. But I'd just be like, Lord, just please help me with the nerves, but I still came, you know, and got back on, because I know our happiness is always in our next lit, in our next level, in our next season, but we have to go into it, God. We have to do our part. God will do His if we do ours. So I am glad. We have to do our part. God will do his if we do ours. So I'm glad that you guys just encouraged um. But it's some names up here. I don't know iPhone, iPhone. If I don't have your email, can you please? Put it in the chat, put it in the chat. Also, I have a Facebook group page that I just made up. Um for those who wasn't on when I had mentioned it, it's called In Her Bible. Because I want this to be not just a Bible study, but also a women's support group, like. A sisterhood where we can talk to each other. We don't have, I'm trying to do this every first and third Tuesday of the month. So but I don't want to wait every other week for us to get together or if we need to prayer, you know, to get in touch with each other or encourage your word, we can be in the group. You know, so whenever y'all on Facebook, you can see a post, we can post, you know, everyone can share, we can help each other and pray too as well. So um so the ones without emails, Rashar- Rash- Rasharon, I'm sorry if I said your name wrong. Um do I have your email already? Okay, if I don't have your email, can you um send me your emails? And for those of you that I do have email. I'm going to send you the group link, um the Facebook group link, so that way you can just join on. And I'm gonna ask other questions too that would help um build up the group in a way, group in a way that it can help you too. Like, again, I do want to do devotionals and things of such. But also, before we get out of here, because I don't want to hold up anybody's time, we doing good. Uh I wanted to end it at eight ten. Um is there anyone who's not saved? Is everyone saved?
Yeah.
The F U, okay, Ty, it's it's called In Her Bible. I'm gonna send you. Uh a link, but let me ask you something with your Gmail. It's called, is it Y at Y Gmail or at Gmail? I mean, at Ymail or at Gmail?
Ymail.
Oh, okay. I wasn't sure that was the type. I sent it to both.
No, you sent it, you sent it to Ymail, it's the right one.
Okay, okay. So uh but is there anyone who's not saved? Okay, is there anyone who may feel like they want to rededicate their life? They might be saved, but they feel like they have fallen short. And they may want to get back on track with God. And if you don't want to say it here, it's one hundred percent fine. You can, you have my emails, you can email me back. Like, hey, I'm always open, y'all. I believe y'all all have my number. You know, feel free to text, call, I'm okay. Like, you know, it's no big deal. I'm not, oh, like, feel like, oh, I'm so big, y'all can't call me. I'm I'm an elder, I'm a leader of prophets, but I'm here for y'all as God's servant. And we're gonna build each other up in whatever way we can, okay? So, oh, thank you, thank you. I got one email. Okay, so I'm gonna put that um. So anybody else, if I don't have your email, before I close up, please uh. Enter your email in the group chat so I can get you going. Um okay, so I'm gonna close out in prayers. Does anybody else want to say anything, any questions or anything before I close out?
I have a prayer.
You say you have a request? Go ahead.
Yeah. Um I have an interview, phone interview tomorrow. I'll just give a really short rundown. I've, there was a um bombing in the Democratic Republic of Congo, Central Africa, a few days ago, right? And a lot of.
Where are you located?
I'm in New Jersey. I'm in the continent of North America. And so I kinda said, but I received the like, oh, you're gonna, we want to interview you. Great, fine. I emailed them back, hey, I can interview this day. I didn't get anything from them. And then right when I heard about the catastrophe, I said to God, guy, well, I said out loud, like. If only, if I can get this job, if only just to give to like a certain organization that's really doing the the thing, like the real thing. Groundwork out that uh it'll be worth it, it'll be worth working. In fact, I can just not move out of my parents' house. I could just save up all that money and instead of paying like twelve hundred dollars, I can for rent, I could just give it to the foundation. I checked my email and then I see a response from the job saying, we want us, we want to interview you tomorrow. So I'm like, okay, so um it was kind of this, and then now you're talking about Hannah and. So I'm kind of like, maybe God is doing this thing like a Hannah situation, like, I heard you. So I guess maybe like more confirmation, but also I pray I get the job. So we can do a prayer.
Yes, I definitely will do that. And also, I do want to say this too. Like how you see that builds up your faith and God would do that, but also now I'm gonna pray if it's God's will for you to get the job. Because sometimes God can just have a test in season two for you to see if you're gonna continue to draw to him. He might just have you go to the set, this next step. But he still might not let you get it. It might not be the job for you, but you need to know, like, God, I prayed, you gave me half of what I wanted. So I know you hear me, but you didn't let it go through. So maybe this wasn't for me, but you know my desire, you know what's in my heart, you know what I want to do. For your kingdom, for the people uh to bless them, please grant me a job, please provide a job for me. Where I can do these things that's pleasing to you, that you know, you would see fit to have me there. So just don't get discouraged. I'm believing God that it's for you and I'm gonna pray for it. But again, don't get discouraged if it's not, because like you said, we go through tests. Sometimes we can get half of it. You know, God might not let us go all the way, but sometimes he want to see your faith level was at. Like, okay, so now you got faith. She's happy. But let me see if I don't give it to her, is she still gonna serve me? Let me see if I don't give it to her, is she still gonna open that Bible? Is she still gonna draw an answer to me? Like, you know, it's it's testing. We we gotta test. He was too. And that's what we do with people and it's sad, but I mean, when we do it to people, but it's just in us, we are. In his, made of his likeness and his image, so it is what it is. But just remember that. So, okay, I'm gonna pray. Father God, in the name of Jesus, I just want to say thank you so much, God, for what you have done in this group. Thank you for everyone who has logged on. To hear what you have spoken through me, oh, God. It was not me, God, but it was all of you, God. I thank you for the lesson that went forth and I pray, God, that. Seed was grown on good groundwork. Seed seed was sown on good ground, Lord God, and that you just plant the word in their hearts, God, and let them remember and have faith. To believe that you would get them through every obstacle, every trial, every situation that they will go through, Lord God. Let them remember Hannah and how. You did it for her, God, and that you have no respect to persons, Lord God, and just like you did it for Hannah and so many other people, and it even have done for us in past times. That you can bring us out time and time again, Lord. That your love is so vast for us and so deep. And that you're ever near to us and that you will never leave us or forsake us, Lord God. And I just thank you for it. And Lord, I lift up your woman servant, Ty. And just ask God, and we're all here in agreement, God, you said in your word that when two or three are gathering, you miss you are there, Lord God. So we believe in that you are here. We believe that you've been here during our whole time, God. And we lift up she, Ty to you, Lord God, and ask God. That if it's your will for her to have this job, that you go before her, go before her, God, in this interview, Lord God, that you speak through her, God. That you touch the people, that you put the right people in place to interview her, Lord God, that it let, that you let it be no disruptions, don't let her have no anxieties, no fears, Lord God. But just let her know that your spirit is with her and dwelling within her. And God, you speak to her, God. If it's your will, you speak to her. And you touch the hearts of the people that interview her, God, to be pleased with the interview, God. Into the position, Lord God, and let it be a blessing to her, Lord God. Yeah, Lord, even if it's not in your will. God, I ask that you give her the strength and if faith needed and the bulls needed to know that you hear her and that you are with her and to not to give up. But to continue to keep applying to jobs, applying to other jobs, so she can find a job that you would have for her, Lord God. But I ask that you open up a big door for her, a major door for her, God, the one that you will allow her to walk into. Um to be efficient and to, Lord God, and um effective and, Lord God. And I just thank you so much for it. And I bless your holy name. In Jesus' name I pray, amen. Alright, alright, so thank you ladies. Thank you ladies so much. I'm gonna.
Thank you. This was a great Bible study. I enjoyed it.
Oh, thank you so much. That blessed my heart. So the next one I'm trying to do, May twenty first, but again, I'm sending out the email. Please, I check our emails, please join the group. Let's let's build, let's build a sisterhood community, let's love each other throughout the week, okay?
Alright, thank you.
No problem. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
You good, Irma?
I'm good, I'm trying.
Just wanted to make sure.
Thank you for everything. Have a blessed evening. Bye bye.
You too. Thank you.